You're telling we were document where every penny spent. If you want to see it, you just come in and show it.
It is easy to answer. Okay, at this time I'll call the November twentieth, two thousand fourteen Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. And if you'd please stand and join in the flag swing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have the approval of the agenda. We do have one item to add, and that would be an executive session that we will have. And does Doug want to be here for that?
I have the courtesy he isn't.
We'll just wait and see, but otherwise you have breakfast.
Unless I've got email over there, but as far as I know, he will be.
Okay. And so we'll add that to the agenda, and I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our consent agenda includes the minutes of November sixth work session, the regular meeting, minutes of November tenth campus, our payroll of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, fund expenditures of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, and wire payments of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
I did have one question. I noticed the minutes of the canvas. Jeannie had put me down as chairman, and I'm not sure why she would have done that.
She did do that.
So we'll correct that portion.
Yeah, and I move that we approve the consent agenda with that correction.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion in the second for approval with the one correction that was mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Craig, if you'll start us out with Commissioner's comments.
Well, we all agree with the standard of the case, meaning what you saw last week, a lot of good information. The state's budgets, you hear from one side, it's not as bad as it looking, and the other side, it's even worse than it's looking. Good, good meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to be there. Would like to bring it up that we'd like to have Brad, see if we can get our legislators, Parker and Arkey, to come in. We've only got three more meetings before the, in the year. And I did want to say that I may not be at the eleventh meeting. Personal issue, I'm not sure at this time, but that's all I have.
I also enjoyed our KAC convention conference, and like you say, the state of the finances of the state is, it just really frustrates me that we got people saying that everything's going to be just great, and other people saying that it's not, and so who do you believe? And like you say, if there, if there are issues that they have to come up with money, I'm, you know, it's going to be pretty obvious there'll be probably cuts on money that comes to the counties, and so I think it's very important that we talk to our legislative people and make sure that, you know, that they support us on some of this, because it's, like you say, we just don't, depends who you talk to, how bad it's going to be. So also, yesterday I attended North Central June, all attention meeting down in Junction City, and apparently through the schools, there is some money that is appropriated for education on certain students, I don't know, but Gary County School System, the new superintendent wanted to share those dollars with us, which apparently hasn't really happened in the past, if we would put in some education programs for the kids that are, that are in the juvenile centers. So we were kind of brainstorming on things we were going to do, and Sean's going to get certified that he can test students to get their GED, and that would be available to anybody that wanted to come in and do that. Plus, we were looking at programs that we possibly could do there. We do have some education programs going on, but we were looking to expand that with the dollars that we'd be getting, and so I think it was a real good working relationship now with, with the school system, and so at least I think we can put some programs that would help the kids that are there and maybe try to turn the pathway around for them so that they weren't returning. And so I thought that was good news that we heard yesterday.
Okay, the KAC meeting was helpful, and, you know, I think it gives you a pretty realistic perspective on what's going on. And, you know, counties certainly need to be alert, and we could have some tough times ahead. On the local level here, you know, I think all of us have been really saddened with the way things have gone for ALCO and the latest thing in the news, where they're going to begin a liquidation process and so on. You know, I think it, especially this time of year with Christmas approaching and so on, and, you know, there's some layoffs and maybe difficult things for people. We really need to, you know, also look for opportunities on a short-term basis and long-term. And on the short-term, you know, there's programs out there, whether, the community programs, you know, to maybe help people during the Christmas time and the Toys for Tots, and, you know, the food bank and so on. I know Laverne and Paul are there.
They've been very busy down there the last few weeks.
And, you know, so, so when you do hear some tough news like that, I mean, we certainly need to be a county and community of compassion. But also, we had a report earlier today, and this was from Janelle, and told us about the Economic Development Committee that is going to be formed, and they're going to be looking for opportunities to help various towns in Dixon County. And we'd like to think there's opportunities for some business expansion or business growth and some assistance in that regard. And so that's something that is going to be rolling out, and we'll continue to hear more about come January. And getting back on the KAC portion, Ben Bennett has served as a board member for the Kansas Association of Counties, and they have people from various regions. He had two terms, and they have term limits on that, and so he was not eligible to run again, and I have visited with him and some others, and so I accepted a position on the state board for the KAC, and that actually will take effect next month. And that's pretty much all I have. Any other comments or questions that anyone else would have? Doug, before you got here, one thing we had added to the agenda, and when we get to it, I imagine it's going to be five or 10, 15 minutes, but we have an executive session, so. Did you have anything?
Well, I trust you've seen the results from the tax sale. I sent those through Brad, and so there was parcels of property that were sold, brought in three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. It's not a money maker for the county, nor is it intended to be. It's a situation to get properties that their taxes are not being paid on back to somebody who would be on the tax roll. There were several parcels of real estate that received, again, no bid at all, not even a dollar, and that's very likely because of the special assessments that somebody would inherit. And so I suggested to Brad that before those come up again, that maybe those jurisdictions that have them would take another look at those assessments upon the property, because it's just that the procedure is if it doesn't sell, it comes up the next year and so forth. And that can go on for quite a while. And when you can't get a one-dollar bid, and Gareth did an excellent job handling the auction, or when you can't get a one-dollar bid and the property's on, you know, several of them will be on, this will be headed into the third year for some, then it's a property that the community, whether it's a city, is maintaining by mowing it and doing those things and adding to the assessment. But it can kind of be a story without ending for a while.
The city would have to approve that reduce those assessments or take them off?
Yeah, the city could waive the assessment for parcel of property if they so chose.
Or adjust them.
Or adjust them, yeah. They could do that, and they could, you know, put it in the position to waive it for a period of time. The downside to that is there's people in other situations adjoining properties that may have the same assessments that are not waived, they're paying the taxes. But I don't have any way of getting them back onto a tax roll unless somebody buys that, that property. And so we will see some of that property year after year, because nobody's going to wants to step into that assessment. And we've started on the, the tax sale that we just did was the two thousand nine, so now we have started on the preparation for the two thousand and ten. And letters have gone out from Leah's office to notify them that because the two thousand and ten have not been paid, that we will be beginning that process. So one ends and the next one starts. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll hear from our county administrator, Brad.
The first item on the list, we have received a request from the city of Solomon to approve along with them in the school district, the renewal of their neighborhood revitalization program that has been in effect for the last five years. It expired this year, and they would like to renew that program in strategic locations they've identified within their city. I emailed that to you for your review, and it comes with a near-local agreement that is signed between the county, the school district, and the city of Solomon to participate in that program. So if you have any questions on that, I certainly may answer them, or may possibly help answer them, but it's pretty straightforward. It's an incremental tax payment type program to help stimulate growth and spending within those strategic locations in the, in the lighted areas of the community. And much like Doug just described, its whole purpose is to get, stimulate more growth and more tax base within the community so that it pays off in the future by allowing people to have some rebates on their taxes at an incremental rate over the next 10 years. So we have a number of them across the county that are in place, and this one will just renew that in Solomon. We have, we have started advertising for the open highway position. We had, last time I talked to you about that, a month or two ago, we had a retirement of one of our people, and we hadn't immediately intended to replace that person, although with a couple of people we've got that have had some significant health issues that are out of work, Martin's just flat shorthand, and so we went ahead and took the liberty to start advertising for a position, hoping we can attract somebody, you know, in the near future. But at this point, we're, we're just flat shorthanded. We've got a couple of people out that won't be back for 30 or 60 days, so. So I don't know whether we'll be able to attract anybody or not, but if you see that advertisement, that's, that's raising my hand, so.
Just temporary or would be full-time?
It would be a full-time, yeah, yeah. So, and we do have a couple of people down there that are, you know, are nearing that period in their life, where they're going to be looking at retirement here in the next 12 to 18 months, so we might as well start that succession planning as well, so. We do have the open position, we just haven't filled it. We're trying to hold off as long as we can, so. We have received back the bids for the bridge inspections for the two thousand and fifteen biennial bridge program, and when we get down to that on the agenda, I can go into those details, the same way with the bids for lease purchase on the ambulance, the two dump trucks and that equipment. I wonder that one we get to there. Just an upbid on the Health Department Drive. Last week, Orbisance had poured the north, I'm sorry, the south half of the parking lot, and then that polar vortex struck, and it was too cold, he wasn't comfortable doing the other half earlier this week. It's my understanding he intends to, and has probably got it poured by now, this morning, since it was supposed to warm up this morning, and get the north half of it poured, and that will complete that project once it's set and cured enough to re-traffic that car, but everything's going, going well on, even with a little deviation of putting the drainage stuff in there, so hopefully we can, that will provide us a good parking lot for many, many years to come without the problems that we've had, so. On the Northwest Fourteenth Bypass Project, Paper's Incorporated got in to close that Monday morning. Immediately got it demoed and poured the, the first section, and they are, poured the second section yesterday morning of those two spots. They are, pretty much, they're planning on laying that here today, and the intentions are open that up tomorrow afternoon, traffic. If there's any, if they, if they're not comfortable with that, at the latest, it might be Saturday morning, but they're well within that window that week that we anticipated it would take to get those two bad spots fixed. So they've done a good job so far, and we're excited to get it back opened up, so.
I did have a comment when I was talking to some people about where it was at, they thought it was probably the railroad tracks that need to be replaced and refixed.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we had, if you remember here a couple of years ago, we kind of took the railroad, and they went out and actually redid those tracks, but even redoing them, if you don't smooth out those tracks, they'll launch in a year, so. They're a lot smoother than they used to be, but there's still nothing that you want to get at a very high, high rate of speed, so. We received a thank you card from Peggy Hauser to the office, and I've given that to you for your review. We appreciate that from her. She was playing with Snow Outport, and she filled the stripes, the paint stripes for Old Forty we recently done. And on that note, you know, we had, we got the bill on that from our contractor, and it was considerably lower than what it normally would be, and we appreciate him, him doing that, getting into the time of the day, and doing it the efficient way that he did, so that it was about 35, 40 percent less than what normally would have been as far as a cost for us, so. We're just on the tail end of completing the security entrance over the county attorney's office. Contractor has pretty much finished all his work, and our personnel is going in now and getting the lock and electrical portion, key bed, and those things installed to finish that up, so they'll have that little protection in the front foyer where people can come in, and we've got bulletproof wall and thick glass and stuff, that they can have a separation between someone if there's problems in the, in the office, so hopefully we'll have that completed here the first of the week. And I did receive notification yesterday that we've been accepted for jail class in Colorado in February. They give me the confirmation, so we've been waiting on that. We had anticipated it would be, it would be accepted, but we hadn't been confirmed, so. We're good to go, barring any major complications that come up again, so. And that's all I've got until we get into the other items.
Okay. We'll move on to notices, communications. Just received a postcard, and it was thanking us for attending the convention and stopping by their booth, and that is something where there are a lot of vendors there that, and in fact, they're the ones that make a lot of that convention possible, because they have the convention hall where they bring in various things for their displays and offer their services, and they pay for that booth space, and so that's one thing that makes it, you know, a little bit more reasonable and really helps put on the convention. But it also gives us opportunity to visit with them. We have a notice from KDHE, and this is on a water pollution control permit, and there should be one in here for somewhere here in Abilene, I'm not finding it. No, it's just notifying us that there is a public notice for anyone that does any discharge, and usually it's just reissuing a permit. So far, they're all other counties. Here's Dixon County, Harvey Walker Feedlot, and this is on six twelve Lark Road, Pope, Kansas, and this permit is being reissued for the existing facility with a maximum capacity of nine hundred and fifty head of cattle, more than 700 pounds. There is no charge or no change in this permit, so we'll have that posted. Also received a magazine from the Commercial Carrier Journal. This one is a little bit of a repeat, but probably just making sure that everybody is aware, and that the Kansas Historical Site Board of Review has officially removed the Abilene Presbyterian Church from the National Register. Of course, that's where the Great Plains Theater was. We also have our NACO newspaper. Then from the North Central Flint Hills Agency, they're just letting us know that, and acknowledging the fact that, that we do have a new member of the, Pat Swinney is the, on the Board of Directors for the North Central, Central Flint Hills Area Agency. And I believe that's probably, this, this one's addressed to you, Laverne, but I think it's for all of us, and it says there's a crash course for adults to accelerate the safety on the roads, and it's just something that they've sent out on a program that they have, so I don't think there's any implication on the way you drive.
Who sent that?
Well, it's from Indianapolis, Indiana. Have you been up to the Speedway lately?
No.
But anyway, it, it just has a newspaper article about some of the driver's safety, so. And that's not unusual. I mean, I get some things here that are addressed to Commissioner Whitehair and Commissioner Bids, and I think once we're on their mailing list, they just pull it up again. The other one I have here, and this was sent by certified mail, is from Stevens and Brand Attorneys, and it was addressed to the clerk of the district court, but it's in regards to Westar Energy versus Myron Freck, and this has to do, I think, with an easement that they're trying to gain Westar. And so this is something that's kind of been ongoing. And I believe that's all we have. Did anyone else receive any? Oh, there was the thank you note from Peggy Hauser, and, and what she was just saying is thank you for painting the stripes on Old Forty. It was unsafe at night without the paint, and she just appreciates the fact that it was upgraded. She also said that she knew Gary would, would have appreciated this also. And, you know, we received other calls from people where they had just mentioned that, you know, they're, some of their children are newer drivers, they aren't necessarily experienced drivers, but, you know, they drive on those roads and things we can do to make them safer. It was appreciated, and I know in our work session earlier, in visiting with Martin, with roads and bridges, and I think John Goff also mentioned that, that, you know, the county at some point maybe needs to consider adopting a, a plan or having it in our budget that we would re-stripe, you know, so many roads or miles of roads per year, because that is something, you know, once we do that, they're, they, they do need attention, and, you know, I think we watch those things and try to take care of them, but that's, that was just something for consideration. I think that's all we have. We do not have any new resolutions. Under unfinished business, then we'll go to review and consider the bids for the 2015 bridge inspection. And Brad, if you'd go ahead and comment on that at this time.
We had put out to the bridge consultant firms, the requests were proposed for the 2015 biennial bridge inspections to be done by standards dictated by KNOT, and we received back three results that appeared, well, we received three, all three of them appeared to meet their qualifications that we had in place. They were included in the BG Consultants of Manhattan, Swobena Manhattan, Cook, Flat and Struble of Topeka. The high bid was BG Consultants of three thousand, four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and the low bid was Cook, Flat and Struble of Topeka, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty. After reviewing those, it's the county engineer's recommendation to accept the low bid from Cook, Flat and Struble of Topeka for twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Are there any questions from the commission? Have we used that before?
We, we've used them a number of times on bridge projects. We haven't used them on the bridge inspections since this program started. The last several years, we've used Swobena, but John and Martin went through both, both bids, and they feel for the price difference that we'll go with Cook, Flat and Struble and give it up for cash, so. The requirements are very, very explicit and detailed, and, and so they're, by far, very reputable firms. I'm sure we'll have any problems.
They've been in business quite a while.
Absolutely, and they do a big, big, big job, so we've, we've done many projects with them, so.
It's always nice to have several people respond to a, a bid process also.
Yeah, I move that we accept a bid from Cook, Flat and Struble of Topeka for twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the bridge inspections.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, we have the second, that we do accept the contracting bid with Cook, Flat and Struble of Topeka. The bid price was twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, and this is for the biennial bridge inspection bids for 2015, and also is with staff recommendation. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to other business, and we have to consider the request from Solomon, and this is on the Neighborhood Revitalization Program in inter-local agreement. And Brad did provide us with an email, but also a copy of that program for our review, and, and it is something where the, Solomon has done this previously, so.
Yes, this is renewing a previous program that expired this year. I believe they had about four or five participants in it, and we recently had a meeting with the city, between the city and school board and Solomon, and they discussed this, and great school board on it, although they didn't have any large number of projects that came in, like new homes or anything. They did have four or five of them that came in at the criteria, so. And that's, I think, the real intent, the real hope is that maybe somebody would have built a new home or, you know, something of that nature in an area, and that's where the real benefit would be seen, so.
And that also includes the industrial development land that they have just south of Interstate on interchange, so that.
Hopefully makes that a little more attractive to.
How long ago did they expand that footprint or their city boundary? Is, I mean, is that in the last year or goes back three, four years ago?
They, they, it's, that is probably three or four years ago. It's taken, we have snow a year or so to build their facility, get it up, and so it's been three or four years ago to take it down. And there's three, if it's adopted, there's, I just gave you the three signature sheets for the three copies of the inter-local agreement, so. It's, of course, the city has obviously approved it, the school board approved it two weeks ago as well, so.
I would go ahead and give the motion that we do approve this request from Solomon for their Neighborhood Revitalization Program in the inter-local agreement.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next one we have is review and sign contracts for KBAC in this, the electrical work for the Navarre Can Step Project.
I have been provided copies by BG Consultants on that project, and it is for the. and it is for the electrical and the HVAC. This is the bids that you had, just the agreements that you had previously accepted for those two functions on the project. These are just the written formal agreements. And there's three copies of each that have new good tabs that need to be signed by the chairman, so.
Okay, are there any questions or is there a motion to go ahead and direct the signature to be placed on there?
Go move. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to go ahead and authorize the chairman, on behalf of the commission, to place the signatures. And we have reviewed the electrical, the contract for KBAC and electrical work for the Navarre Canstep Project. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next thing we have is to review and consider the lease purchase agreement for the new ambulance and dump trucks. And this is something too, that Brad did supplies with a report on that. So would you want to offer us a summary on that and then also on the bids that we have? Brad?
Absolutely. We had previously authorized the purchase, actually the order, of two freightliner dump trucks, one freightliner Horton ambulance, and four Zoll defibrillators. Those items all take an extended period of time to get, especially the three vehicles, up until a year from the time we ordered them. We ordered them early this year, knowing that the delivery time would be after, if anybody says January of 2015. As we near that time now, we have solicited bids from the area financial institutions to see about what their rates would be for a lease, a four-year lease purchase. We received three bids back from our request. Astra Bank, which was 3.25 percent. First Bank Kansas bid 2.99 percent. And the UMB Bank here in Abilene bid 2.751 percent. With that, it would be our recommendation that we accept the bid from UMB Bank to enter into a lease purchase agreement within, with a 2.751 percent on a four-year purchase. On a base, on a bid or a base principle of $655,922 for those items.
That's an outstanding bid, really.
Yeah.
It really is. Unfortunately, fortunately, at this time, interest is cheap. Unfortunately, when we're looking at investments, interest is cheap. So you can't have it both ways, I guess.
Yeah, I know that we accept a bid from UMB Bank for 2.751 percent.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion to accept the bid for UMB Bank for 2.751 percent. And as Brad mentioned in this and is reported, is for the lease purchase agreement that we had. The full amount of the bid request is $655,922. Any further questions or comments?
When are we expecting delivery of these?
Martin, actually, on the dump trucks, Martin drove up with Andy to Kansas City yesterday, did the final inspection. Everything looks great. The only thing they noted that they weren't, didn't think was complete is one of our requirements was that the manufacturer put the radio, the two-way radio antenna on the vehicle prior to it being delivered while they've got everything apart. The old way of doing it, when it comes in, we drop the headliner out. I can tell you from many, many times of experience, it never goes back in as good as it came out. So that was one thing they noted. Everything else looked perfect. Martin and Andy were both very impressed. So we're looking right after the first year, it'll be ready. The ambulance, I believe in February, they're scheduled, John's scheduled to go back east and do the final inspection on it. And if it looks good at that point, then shortly after that, it'll be delivered and they'll bring it home, so. So it won't be long after the first of the year. The Zoll defibrillators, we already have those. The company agreed to let us have them in advance, and they are in service and they are functioning, so. And as of Monday, they'd already served their purpose on two patients in the county in the last week or so, and one of them most probably saved a life, so.
Another.
Yeah, you talked to us in our work session about that, but I think it's very important that the public knows that once you explain a little bit about how that operates and how time-saving and that type thing is.
Keep in mind that this explanation's coming from a novice and not a medical official. But these are new, a new 12-lead defibrillator monitor. So the paramedic or EMT puts 12 different leads on your body and monitors 12 different locations. The real benefit to that is it's much more accurate and much more detectable. But the additive benefit is we have added mobile hotspots, Wi-Fi hotspots to each ambulance. And these devices have the capability to send the real-time data as the paramedics put that monitor on the patient in their home or wherever they're at on the accident scene. If it's a heart attack or suspected heart problem, they can send that strip and that data directly to the Salina and to the Manhattan trauma centers, heart centers, to where those specialists or some of the best heart doctors in the world can see that real time and know what to tell them and know what to expect when that patient gets there. And no longer do they have to wait till they roll in the door for them to put it on and determine what the patient care needs to be. And they can have their cath lab assembled and ready to go when the patient pulls in the drive, which saves hours, I mean, that's not if not hours of the patient's time to get the care that they critically need, so. It's new technology, new to us certainly, and we're very fortunate to have that quality of staff and that quality of technology in place for a citizen, so.
Yeah, I think that's, from bid from the rural area, I think that's very important because of the time savings and, like you say, that we know that the time that ambulance gets there and then the time they get transported to a hospital and all this, a lot of that monitoring can be done ahead of time. Like you say, when they get to the hospitals, they do need to go into surgery right away. It's, that's something that can be accomplished right immediately.
Absolutely. But those are already, we received those about three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and our personnel have been trained and certified on them, and they've been in use the last couple of weeks, so. And the Zoll company agreed to let us have them in advance, knowing that we would be purchasing them, so.
Good, very good. We still need to go ahead and call the question then. And we did have the motion and the second, so all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have was that of an executive session. And this would include Brad and our county attorney and the commission. And what was the amount of time for that for?
I'd say we'd go more than 10 is what we need, yeah.
Okay, so I'll have that for 10 minutes and...
I'll make the motion. We go into executive session at... May I take a break?
Up to you.
Okay, 11:39 for 10 minutes for Attorney-client's privileges land acquisition.
Okay. I'll second it. We have the motion and the second to go into executive session for 10 minutes. Land acquisition discussion involving the county attorney and administrator. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries.